Ladies and gentlemen, it is 7:30. We will pull together our town meeting for this evening. The first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you will all rise and join me in the pledge. Flag is to your right. Our left.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. My first order of business will be to appoint a moderator. Ed Tyrell has served as our town meeting moderator for many years now. I'm thanking for that. But it is open to the floor, so I'll entertain a motion that anyone would like to make to appoint Ed Tyrell as this evening's moderator for the town meeting.
I'll make a motion to appoint Ed Tyrell the moderator for tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Coles-Lark. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Connolly. Are there any further nominations to be made from the floor? There being none, we will close nominations. All in favor of Mr. Tyrell serving as this evening's moderator signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No one? Mr. Tyrell, the meeting is yours.
This town meeting of the town of Ridgefield is called to order. Our first order of business is to elect a town meeting secretary. I notice Wendy Leonetti is with us tonight. The chair would entertain a motion electing Wendy Leonetti secretary.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any further nominations? There being no further nominations, all those in favor of Wendy Leonetti as secretary indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Wendy Leonetti is our secretary.
One nay.
She's still our secretary. I will read the call of the meeting. Notice of a special town meeting, Town of Ridgefield, Connecticut, Wednesday, May 8, 2024, at 7:30 p.m. Notice is hereby given that a formal special town meeting for residents will be held on Wednesday, May 8, 2024, at 7:30 p.m. in the Town Hall Large Conference Room located at 400 Main Street, Ridgefield, Connecticut, to vote on items pertaining to the following. Number one, ACT, proposed use of LoSiP funds to complete roof repairs and extend the current lease agreement between ACT and the Town of Ridgefield to a 25-year term. See the town calendar for details at www.ridgefieldct.gov. The matter to come before the meeting is the proposed lease extension between the Town of Ridgefield and ACT, a contemporary theater. In order to open discussion on this issue, do I have a motion to approve the lease extension?
Point of order, please, before the motion is made. John Tartaglia, 638 Danbury Road, for the record.
Through the moderator, please.
I'm going to try and turn. I had a little surgery today. The first objection relates to whether you've determined whether or not the people in this meeting or electors properly registered to vote and their sufficient number of them. Two, the second point of order is the notice does not comply with the Freedom of Innovation Act and the charter relating to the conveyance or the disposal of property for a term of 25 years, which is effectively a serious conveyance. And three, it bypasses the process that requires review by Department of Finance. For those procedural reasons, the motion is not made at this time because the Board of Selectment does not have sufficient information and has not proceeded procedurally correctly in order to bring this matter before the town for proper consideration by all departments and proper information provided to the people.
Okay, thank you. In order to open discussion on this issue, do I have a motion to approve the lease extension?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
There being a motion and a second to approve the lease extension, the question is now open for discussion. Before speaking, please state your name and address for the record, even if we know whom you are, and limit your comments to three minutes. Three minutes. Please address your comments to the moderator, me. This is not an open discussion between members of the town meeting, nor is it a time to ask questions. This is your opportunity to spend three minutes convincing your fellow citizens to vote one way or the other. Do not be bashful. You came out tonight because you care. Get your opinion off your chest. The process will be better for it. I'm going to ask Mr. Marconi to give us some background on this lease extension.
Sure, this is for the Act of Connecticut lease of the Schlumberger Auditorium. That was converted seven years ago, approximately. The lease was approved by a town meeting, and it is for a dollar a year. That also took into consideration the tenants' complete remodeling of that facility, which is what you see today. The purpose of this lease coming in front of us for some modifications, one, is that in order to qualify for many of the grants under, like, for example, the NEA, the National Endowment for the Arts, they like to see, those organizations would like, organizations like to see at least a 25, 20- to 25-year lease, so that the money invested, we know that it's not going to be for two years, right? That this organization is going to be around for a long time. And that's the reason for the request to extend it in terms of its timeline. Also in the lease, there's a clause, which is not in any of our other 501 leases with organizations in town, and that clause is that the organization currently occupying Act of Connecticut, the building, is required to complete roof repairs. That is something that would be a financial hardship of sorts to the organization, and they have asked that that clause be removed. The Board of Selectmen has agreed, and that is why it is in front of you this evening. The LoSiP funds that are referred to are not general fund. They are not taxpayer. They are of sorts because they're state funds that come to the town every year. We receive approximately, in the past, $152,000 and change every year. That'll be increased in '24, this year, to $230,000, as well as going forward. So those are the funds that we would be looking at to utilize to pay for the roof repairs that need to take place. Our estimates are anywhere from $240,000 up to $307,000. That's the overview. Thank you.
Thank you. The floor is open for discussion. Mr. Tartaglia, name and address for the record.
John Tartaglia.
You don't have to stand.
I'm sorry. 638 Danbury Road.
Three minutes.
The motion should be denied besides the procedural grounds previously stated. The Board of Selectmen does not have sufficient information concerning income and expense of the party, that is, the tenant, to determine whether there is a hardship or not. The available 990 from the IRS filing indicates possibly revenue as high as $2 million a year with possibility of $3 million a year. There's no information on how many people, how many ticket sales, or what is the gross income from whatever it is that goes on there and any concessions? There's no way for the board, as a landlord, to make proper financial evaluation and determination of what it is doing with the 25-year conveyance for $1. Effectively, it is a subsidy for a particular part of the town culture, which may be unlawful because it favors one particular subgroup or suborganization, as opposed to honoring the pledge to take care of the town in general. The money that you say is no money because it comes from the state is money because the town could use this money for other purposes if it didn't provide the roof. An amortization of $300,000, $250,000 to $300,000 over either a 15- or 25-year term would result in approximately $1,800 to $2,500 a month in rent. You'd get your money back in amortization over 25 years. You could fashion a lease with a penalty for early termination or other factors to supervise and control the property, which is what the Schlumberger report, of course, Mr. Marconi is fully familiar with it because it was the foundation of what's been done here. That report did not submit to the Board of Selectmen that this should, any property such as Schlumberger, Schlumberger, you know, Alsace-Lorin. The issue is, is this property, should be handled as an income-producing property? And specifically in that report, they say rent, control, and maintain. So I'm not convinced. I don't care what the group is. Doesn't matter. With no information on the non-for-profit, with no information on income, I quite frankly couldn't find the assessors card for this property. So everybody says there's improvements there. I have no idea what they are. I assume you know. There must be some assessment, calculation, set of plans, and CFO that certified it and determined whatever was done there. I don't know what it is, but it has a value. The Schlumberger property, it cost the town $7 million to $8 million. Some of it recouped, I'm not quite sure if all of it was. But that doesn't mean that you give it away because that's not a fiduciary, that's not a proper exercise of fiduciary duty to honor your obligation to the entire town.
30 seconds.
Thank you. Give me 20, give me two seconds for the thank you. Essentially, you're doing something, and you're focusing the economy of this town and steering it towards, we'll call it arts and culture. And to say that they are flighty, that means artists are flighty, in this particular case, the party, who is the tenant, has said if you start charging them rent, they're going to pick up and leave. Now, being a commercial landlord, the first thing I would do is never be dictated to by a tenant. And two, I would say, hey, listen, what are you making here? What is the fair cut for this town? That's my opinion on the matter, and I feel it would be for the benefit of everybody, regardless of who's an artist or who loves culture or anything else.
Okay, thank you. Are you a resident?
Yes.
Okay. Name and address for the record.
Daniel Lee, 35 Ossinger Road. I am the co-founder and the artistic director of ACT. What I always say to my audiences at the start of every performance, at every production, is that we consider ourselves lucky to live and work in a town where the arts are considered vital to a thriving society. That doesn't happen in a lot of towns and a lot of counties. If we've learned anything from the pandemic, we have learned that regional theater across this country is in serious trouble, and 30% of all regional theaters across this nation have closed, never reopened. We are here for, want to be here for the long run. We feel as though we contribute so much to this town. We bring in not only artists and people working on our shows, which is, I think, over 250 people per season, but the audiences that we bring in that then generate income for restaurants and businesses and, you know, other organizations in this town, I think, is pretty remarkable. There is, I believe that there is a 990 that the gentleman before me is referencing, and that was 2021, 2022, 990 from our annual audit. And that income that he's referring to, what he referred to, is from SBOG shuttered venue monies that we got from the government, from the state and national, you know, funding. That came at a time when our audit happened. We simply do not have that kind of money. We never have threatened to pick up and leave. The comment that was made at a town meeting two weeks ago was that if the roof is not covered, if we have to cancel a production, if we have to cancel performances, that we might have to. It's not a direct threat. It's that we will lose so much income and so much earnings and so much money that we may have to close down until we can get that back.
Okay, 30 seconds.
I will finish right there. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Lars? Name and address for the record.
Richard Larson, Tan Bevitt Court, former chairman of the Schlumberger Citizens Committee. It's hard to believe that seven years ago, in this very room, we had a town meeting to vote on a recommendation from the Schlumberger Committee to pursue a lease with ACT on the Schlumberger Auditorium. At that point, the auditorium was in complete disrepair, unusable, and subject to demolition. At that meeting, there were 139 town residents, and the recommendation to pursue a performing arts venue with ACT of Connecticut passed unanimously, 139 to 0, indicating the support of the town, both for performing arts and, in particular, a venue including the theater. So here we are, seven years later, and ACT has been extraordinarily successful. And I certainly met the expectations of the town that would provide a venue that brings folks into Ridgefield to shop by and see theater. The auditorium, which was in disrepair, was turned into a state-of-the-art sound and lighting venue. Performances sell out, and Ridgefield has benefited by bringing in folks from Connecticut, New York, and beyond. Like all arts venues, though, performance sales do not cover the cost of running a first-class theater. Contrary to what some folks have said, ACT is not a profit-making organization, but relies on contributions, as do most of the arts venues in Ridgefield, to remain viable. Also contrary to what some have said, ACT has not made hundreds of thousands of dollars in the past. Productions, performance, and tickets provide roughly 40% of the cost of running the theater. The rest comes from charitable contributions, and without those, ACT would be losing $1 million a year to the hardship. Also contrary to what I've read, the ACT lease is not a sweetheart deal. At the time, seven years ago, the lease rate was based on the cost of renovating the auditorium, and as I remember, the estimates at that point were about $1 million. And in fact, it was much more than that. So I think it is actually appropriate to give some consideration to looking at that original lease, which was based on some assumptions, which, you know, didn't really turn out quite like we expected. So in summary, through the hard work of the ACT leaders, Ridgefield has a first-class professional theater, which would be the envy of any town around us. I hope the board will continue to support ACT, and I do believe that it's appropriate to review some aspects of the original lease now that we're seven years after that.
Thank you very much. In the back, please. Name and address for the record.
Sean Arshambo, Ramaphu Road, Ridgefield. I want to start out by saying that we've been to a number of performances at ACT. They're exceptional, very professional, exciting. The last one we did was the Million Dollar Quartet, which is a real hoot. We do appreciate this being in the town, and I agree with all the positive things that were said about it. However, it is a business, and the research and checking that I've been done, that I've been doing, it looks like they've been pretty profitable, you know, even during COVID. They didn't do that badly, and I know that some money comes from grants, but over the years, they've continually gone up and gone up, gone up. The sheet that was handed out shows that they've made a tidy profit. And, you know, my basic understanding is that a lease is a contract. You agree to do the roof, and then seven years later, when the roof comes due, you're saying, well, we're not going to do it. You know, we're just, we're not going to honor our contract, which I don't think is appropriate. And I think there are many ways that they could have gotten around that. From what I've heard, from talking to people and stuff, there was no, well, listen, could we split it 60-40? Could you maybe charge us rent, but you guys pick up the tab? Could we have some kind of, you know, conversation about what would be the best way forward? I think Mr. Tartaglia brought something up that was very interesting, that when you amortize a loan like that over 15 or 20 years, it's not a true hardship, at least according to the figures we see here. So I'm a little disappointed in the attitude that's come across. I think a contract is a contract. I haven't heard that there has been, you know, a real effort to say, well, listen, can we negotiate? Can we do something? It's sort of either or. As nice and as great a thing is, if they had come to me and said, listen, if, you know, we have to do the roof, we're going to have to close, I would have said, okay. You know, you're a business. If that's your choice, then we'll have to make, see what we can do. Maybe we can go from there. But I think a lot of responsibility still resides with the people of ACT, and the idea that using those additional funds, LoSiP funds, I guess, again, it takes away from what we could use for roofs for schools or other projects that we would normally use those funds for, which are not businesses.
Thank you. Anybody else? Name and address for the record.
My name is Shelley Terry. I live at 75 Iker Lane here in Ridgefield. In full disclosure, I work for ACT of Connecticut. I am their Director of Development. So with that said, I'm very close to the money that we need to raise. It's absolutely true that the ticket sales for ACT do not cover the operating expenses that we have for the theater. So my job as the Director of Development is to raise the additional funds. So I'm not involved with ticket sales. I'm not, I don't produce theater. I come in to help with everything else, which includes individual donations, foundation grants, sponsorships. So that's what my job is at the theater. So I can absolutely say that that money, and it's actually more like 35% of our budget, is what covers ticket sales, and everything else comes through individuals, foundations, corporations, government grants. We've been fortunate over the time with COVID to have some relief funds. A lot of nonprofits got that funds. We were able to keep our doors open, so to speak, while we were actually shut during COVID. Since then, a lot of that government funding has gone away, so we do not have access to that funding any longer, which puts tremendous burden back on us as the nonprofit to raise that money. So we are not in a surplus situation. We do not have money reserved in the bank to pay for capital improvement projects like a roof renovation. And I think the only other thing I want to say, as someone that works here and lives here, I am benefiting as someone here in the community. So a job is being given to me because I live here. I think that when I see people that come into town and they shop at the stores, they eat at the restaurants, the economic benefit that ACT has been able to provide to our community is tremendous, and I don't think that should go unnoticed. So I would just thank you all for your consideration of this proposal and say that it's very much needed.
Thank you. Mr. Murray.
Your name is Terry? Is that correct?
Last name Terry.
Well, I get that. I just want to make sure I was right. It's unfortunate that she didn't come to the original meeting and otherwise convey that to us at the outset, because this 990 kind of, that's been distributed, tells a different picture. So the questions, the questions that are prompted by this 990 are, you know, as a representative of the town and the taxpayer in general, that's where my primary responsibility is. You know, these are legitimate questions. However, like I said, it would have been, it would have been better if you had showed up a few weeks ago, because then we would have, this would have been not discredited. It's certainly not, it's not updated. So I don't know where the latest document is. It would have been nicer if we had a more updated document, because this is somewhat, I mean, I don't know. Bottom line is, I came prepared to say, I think we should slow down, and if we had a chance to redo this, I would have kind of, my comments would have echoed Sean's back there with respect to some negotiation. However, under the circumstances, if, what we were told originally is the case, that you really don't have the money, it is what it is. So I'm not going to change my mind, so to speak. I just want to convey that. I'm going to go ahead with what we originally planned, okay?
Thank you. Next. Go ahead, please. Name and address for the record.
Erin Craig, 387 Milton Road West, Ridgefield. I am the producing director at ACT of Connecticut. My responsibility is to the business side of the organization. I am also, of course, involved in the productions, but those are predominantly the artistic director's decision and side of the business. The question of the 990s, you're right, didn't come up in the original conversations. We are in process right now on our 2023 audit and 990. As Ms. Terry said, we do not have the funds. As we look at where we are in our annual operating budget, we, our income from ticket sales, regardless of the amazing Million Dollar Quartet, thank you, and even Kinky Boots, which has sold out, is that with 182 seats, we are capped out at income. We also are an organization that really speaks to the community, and a lot of our programs are free to, whether it's underserved populations, whether it's our education programs, whether it is, and part of, all of the various additional programming that happens outside of our main stage productions and in tangent with our, is that the right word? In tandem, thank you, with our actual productions. Those are things that we have to raise additional funds for, but we feel it's absolutely important and a core part of our mission to be able to provide theater and arts and culture to everyone. We are not sitting over there saying we are only for people who can pay for a top-ticket price. That is not what we are here for. We are here to speak and be a part of the community, as I know many and all of you know. We are also work really feeding hand-to-mouth. Every day that we sell a ticket, we are able to keep somebody employed, whether that's an actor, who, I can tell you, they don't get paid that much to do what they do on that stage, or one of our staff members, and we don't have enough staff. We work round the clock to do what we do because we love what we do and we love how it affects and how it influences our community. And we are grateful, as Daniel said, to be here and be a part of this community, and we are grateful for the support, and we ask for, you know, thank you for your consideration of this. We don't want our patrons to have rain coming down on them like they did during Million Dollar Quartet. I don't want to ask anyone to stand there with a bucket. Nobody wants to sit there, and we would have to cease operations if we were to have rain coming in on our patrons again in this next production. We don't want to, we want to keep going, as Daniel said. We're here for the long haul. So thank you.
Anybody else? Kirk?
Kirk, 62 last minute finish. And I agree with everything that's been said about the great thing that ACT is and what a great asset it is for the town. And if anyone's to be faulted here, no offense to the Board of Selectmen, it's the Board of Selectmen for not demanding a current P&amp;L and a current balance sheet that would have shown exactly where they are. The 990 is a poor substitute for that, but it does show cash in the bank at the end of the fiscal year 2022 of $2.3 million. It shows a fund balance of $2.8 million. Now, you know, if that's not a fair, you know, number, it's kind of, that's all we've got. And I would have hoped that maybe somebody might have, if you've seen this, would have come in with a balance sheet, a pro forma or something, to say, we really are destitute. We really will go out of business. I personally don't believe you will. I think you've got the money in the bank. I don't think that you would close your doors. I don't, I mean, I think you've got, and it is a sweetheart deal. I'm sorry. A dollar a year is a sweetheart deal. It is a sweetheart deal.
Want to answer that?
No, I can't. I can't do that. But I'm saying it is a sweetheart deal. You would not ever walk away from that. It's too good. And you've got $2 million, you say, that you invested in it. You raised $2 million to invest in the property. Well, that's what he said at the meeting. And now he's going to walk away from that $2 million? Raising $50,000 ought to be a cakewalk if you raised $2 million when you started the thing, and now you actually have a track record and a lot of people who love you. So I personally think this was a mistake. I'd like to talk, I'd like to talk about LoSiP, when that, I think that's in the next one. I'd like to talk about LoSiP separately, because I think...
It won't be spoken about separately. We have one motion on the table.
No, LoSiP is a second item, isn't it?
No, there's one item. Speak now about LoSiP.
Okay, LoSiP. LoSiP funds, to get, to use LoSiP funds, it must be on the capital improvement plan of the town, or it must be in emergency. Now, the emergency is not a leaky roof. The emergency is a tornado, is a fire, is, you know, is something that is not man-made. This roof has been getting old every year for, what, 25 years? It was coming to the end of life. You signed, somebody signed a contract. A contract is supposed to be sacred, and trying to get out of it now, I think, is a big mistake. So I would like to move to table this motion until the Board of Finance has a chance to look it over and for the ACT to be able to answer some of these questions about what their financial position is.
Anybody else?
I need a second.
Anybody else?
I second.
Anyone else? We're in public, we're in the comments section. Mr. Connolly.
So I encourage everyone to support this change. I can very much appreciate the notion, when you look at a contract and say, this is what it's included? You agreed to that? Let's stick to that. Let's stick to that. That was my initial thought. What changed my mind is just the measure of fairness. Every other organization, similar organization, has something where all that external capital construction is covered. Again, I was not part of this board. I don't know why I even asked the question. How that got into that, I don't know or not, but it just felt from a basic idea of fairness that if other arts nonprofit organizations are getting that same kind of benefit, then ACT certainly should be getting that. They've certainly earned that. It seemed like a very simple thing to do. We can cover that. That's all I have to say. So I encourage everyone to join me in supporting us.
Thank you. No, no, you don't, you can't make a motion in the middle of the comment. No, because he can't make a motion and stop somebody else's comment. No, he can't.
I have a motion to table. That's a, that's a valid motion.
Okay, we're going to let him have a comment, and then somebody else can. Then we'll go back to your motion. Anybody else have a comment? No, you went already. Go ahead.
I just want to say that...
Name and address for the record.
Alisa Hackenberg, Holman. So I just wanted to say that, you know, ACT does so many good things for disadvantaged children and families, and they're really a big part of the community. And I think that it's really important. Actually, I was, I was just going to say, I was saying, oh my God, that whole lease thing sounds crazy. The fact that in all of the other leases, you know, just like you were saying, in all of the other leases, the roofs are covered and, you know, and stuff like that. So it would be, it seems to me fair and logical that you'd want to kind of be consistent for the town. So, and, you know, I don't know what you were saying about the emergency thing, but honestly, if you have a business and they're just barely getting by, and then it starts raining in there, that can be like a giant liability. And if the town is the landlord, I would think that that could be a liability if it keeps raining in the place, so you want to get it fixed sooner rather than later, because then it costs more, which I'm sure it sounds like you guys don't want fixes to cost more. You want them to cost less. So anyway, and also, just so you know, well, you all know this anyway, but we have like a cultural designation in town, and that's one of the things, I think we were the first town in the state of Connecticut to have the cultural designation. And the reason we have that is because we have a variety of artistic businesses that, that attract people to town. And, and like was already said, it helps everybody, you know? Rising waters lift all ships. So anyway, that's it.
Will you not to reply?
No. I'm going to let somebody else go first. Anybody else? No, I want to deal with you, and then we'll go into him.
Okay. My name is Greg Cabasacali, in two Washington. In full disclosure, I am a member of the Board of Finance, so I'm going to wear a couple of hats here tonight. I am not speaking for the Board of Finance. Here's where I'm confused. Mr. Moderator. If this came before the Board of Finance, the first thing I would have asked the chairman is to break this request in half, because I'm confused. Does the original contract say you're responsible for the roof, or we're responsible for the roof? I want to take a step back there for a second. As a member of the Board of Finance and as someone who's lived in town for a long time, we got a lot of leaky roofs in this town. Ask any school, ask any building, they're all flat, they all leak. They all leak, and we're going to be doing a lot of roofwork. So this should have been one of, as landlords, you got to take care of the roof, right? So I would have liked to have seen that broken in half from the low SIP money. I did a quick study of the low SIP money. We spent money on roofs. We spent money on sidewalks. We spent money on parking lots, infrastructure. That's the I in low SIP. So I would have liked to see these two separated. They're not separated here tonight. They're bundled together. I don't even know how I'm going to vote on this tonight. I've been working it out for a week and a half now, and I've watched some old footage. This is a little bit commingled, and I would have appreciated it broken apart.
Understood.
Thank you.
Last one.
Caroline Kellen, 79 East Street, Richmond, Connecticut. I just want to say that I am a foundation director and that I fund money, I fund many organizations in the town, and that it is my job as a foundation director to do due diligence and assess need, which I do with every organization that we support in this town. So I'm very familiar with this organization's financials, as well as all of the other charities that they're involved in, and I can say that this is a real need. I think that the ask is fair, and I understand what everybody is saying because, and I do appreciate everyone's looking out for the town, which is at the heart of the matter, what you're doing. But I'm telling you as somebody that also pays, tries to supplement everything the town does and also does her homework, that this is something unique to this organization that should never have been in the lease, that the people who ended up running the organization were not the architects of that lease, and that that money that would need to be raised would be the same money that would be going to other organizations, to churches, to other things. So churches, yes.
We pay for churches?
No, 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 this is not a back and forth between the people I said.
It's not, but, no, you don't. I do. I pay, so, so the thing...
Give them the money.
Let's stick to, let's stick to ACT and this lease.
So, so the point is, this, they should have the same provisions as every other 501(c)(3) in the town of Ridgefield. That's not an unfair ask. That's not a strain on the community. The community loves this theater. The community supports the theater to the best of its ability, and the theater brings in lots of joy and culture and people. I have a disabled daughter. She goes and is able to have classes at this theater. They don't turn their back on anyone. They bring in all the people. So, and I recommend everybody who hasn't seen a show to come see one.
Okay, thank you. You can now make the motion you wanted to make.
I move to table this...
You have a motion to, to table, to table the main motion, okay?
Second.
And we have a second.
Is the argument open on the motion?
I haven't, you haven't accepted your second yet. Then we're...
My second.
Okay, your second. We're going to let you speak first for one minute. One minute. Mr. Carr can speak first for one minute.
Given the fact that we don't have a current P and L, and all we've got is this 990, it seems to me they're taking a little bit more time to get up-to-date information. I would also probably like to see all of these other leases and see how much they're, if they're all paying a dollar and none of them are, have a, you know, have this clause, I would consider that in my decision. But I think we need some time on this, and I know time is working against us because the roof is leaking. But I think taking maybe another week, maybe two, would not be awful. In the meantime, you do need to stop the leakage over the, you know, in the auditorium.
I speak on a second. The purpose of my comments are that we cannot, in this town, operate by joy and compassion. We have to measure and know, please, please, we have to know by measurement what we're doing. We cannot operate a civic government in this form. If we don't have quantities, we don't have knowledge. You say you're a foundation person. Maybe you knew this person's, this group's financials. We don't know it, and it hasn't been part of the notice. I don't think the Board of Selectmen notices. I don't think the assessor knows what you did there, because I can't find the data card that would even demonstrate what you did. I don't know that you have a C of O or a permit for what you did. I assume you do. All I know is there's no records of it, so I can't make an evaluation. And my obligation is to my family, and the $15,000, $20,000 I pay a year in taxes, a lot of which I think, once it goes into the pot, everybody says, well, give them some money, because everybody loses responsibility when the money goes in the pool.
15 seconds.
Somebody has to be responsible. Somebody has to measure. Someone has to determine if joy is capable of quantification so we can operate. We got a priority list. Is this more important than schools? Is this more important than this? Is this more important than meals on wheels? $2,000 a month on an amortized basis, you'd cry in poverty? I'm having a lot of problems believing it.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. The motion that we have on the table right now is a yes vote, and we, and this ends, and we don't vote on the main motion tonight. A no vote, we then move to the main motion, okay? So before we...
Say that again?
Your motion is to table it.
That's right.
An aye vote would table it. A nay vote would not table it.
Right, so I tables, nay doesn't table.
Yep. Everybody understands it.
Okay, I didn't hear it.
Okay. Only people who are electors of the town can vote. You're an elector of the town if you're a registered voter or own proprietor of $10,000 or more. Understood? So if you don't live in the town, don't vote. Thank you. All those in favor of the motion to table this to another time signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those say nay.
Nay.
The nays win by far. Does anybody doubt that? The nays win. The nays win, okay? We're now going to move to the main motion. The main motion is to approve the lease amendment and extension. Mr. Marconi.
I just want to clarify the record. I know Mrs. Leonetti is here entering information into the record that some statements have been made about the lack of an assessor's card. We do not have assessor cards on any town buildings. We own the building.
You got no measures? You don't know what you have?
No, not a discussion back and forth.
That's a question for Mr. Garzi. You're welcome to ask him. As far as COs, you can ask the building official. He's in charge of that and is responsible for the state of Connecticut building code. We do not have this clause in any other lease. I can verify that, and I'll speak to that. And equally, we never have asked any 501 for a 990. Whether we want to start doing that can be a question, and we may want to, but we never have in the past, and I find that to be highly discriminatory in terms of basing any decision on a 990, because we have not used them in the past. So I urge approval. Thank you.
Mr. Murray.
Chris Murray, Ivy Hill Road. Obviously, there's, this is a contentious issue. I would, as I said before, if we had more information earlier, it would have been better. But I think, you know, the point's been made, and it's registered with me. Rudy just said, you know, whether or not we, we're going to, we're going to look at this going forward. I would recommend we look at this going forward and at least have a public discussion about whether or not we look at, as landlords, whether or not we look at 990s or whatever they happen to be, and that we do a comparison and understand what all our leases are. Rudy's negotiated them, so I don't have a kind of a tactile understanding of them. I take him at his word. I'm just going to say, we hear you. I hear you guys. We're going to, we're going to, we're going to do this better so we don't have a repeat of this. And, and I'm, maybe better isn't the right word. I'm kind of the new guy, so I don't know what they know, and I don't have the institutional knowledge. I'm just saying, I hear you, and, you know, we're going to, in my mind, I'm going to do a better job going forward, making sure we have all the information we need before we make a decision.
Thank you, Mr. Murray.
Just a point of clarification again, if I may. Although I have been in on negotiations, every lease we have goes, has to go to a public hearing and then on to a town meeting for a vote by the people.
I'm sorry, this is the town meeting to approve the lease? This is the final step?
Correct.
I'm sorry.
This next, this next vote is, this next vote is to approve the lease extension with changes. One more.
Comment into question.
No questions. I said earlier, no... Go ahead.
Coming into this process late, I would be curious to know how, what the process is for submitting financial information so that we do not fall into this again in the future. I was not aware that a 2021 990 was being shared tonight, and if I knew that, I think we could have provided more information to you all.
There is, there is no process at this time. Mr. Murray's going to work on a process.
Perfect.
We all are.
We all are.
Okay, that's what, that was Mr. Murray's comment, which they're all going to do. We're voting on the final motion. Only those people who are electors of the town should vote on this motion. All those in favor of the motion, all those in favor of the motion pending before the town meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes, the ayes have it? The motion carries. The Board of Select persons is authorized to carry out the motion. Is there any further business to come before the meeting? There being none, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Some rule.
Is there a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second to adjourn? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The motion carries. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for coming.